Thank you. Here you go, Chief. We're gonna have a welcome and a prayer. And Pastor, come on up.
Good evening. Good evening. Welcome. Welcome, everyone, to Ward Four Citywide Town Hall Meeting. And we're just so glad to be here as citizens of this great ward. Amen. Amen. Now let us pray. Let us bow our heads and let us pray. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you as humble hearts gathered in the city of College Park to seek your presence, your guidance, your divine wisdom for the town hall meeting. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as citizens, leaders, and stakeholders with a shared purpose of progress and peace. We acknowledge that without you, we can do nothing. But with you, all things are possible. So Father, bless this meeting. Bless our leadership today, God. We ask right now, in the name of Jesus, that every voice be heard and respected, and every concern be met with compassion. Silence division, Lord, uproot confusion, and let understanding arise. Grant our elective officials and community leaders wisdom beyond their years. Wisdom that is pure, peaceable, gentle, open to reason, full of mercy and good fruit. Let every decision made today be rooted in justice, truth, and a deep love for the people of this great city. We pray for the safety of our streets, the healing of our neighborhoods, and the flourishing of our families. Raise up leaders who will serve not for status but for service. Let this town hall meeting be a beacon of hope and a model of collaboration in this great Ward Four. Hallelujah. God, we speak peace over College Park. Peace in the school, the businesses, the homes, the hearts of each and every one of us. May this gathering ignite transformation that ripples through every corner of our city. And we pray this in the mighty and the majestuous name of our Father. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna have a welcome by Monica Kroom.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for coming out this afternoon. It is truly an honor for me to be here with you. I'm Monica Kroom, and I am so proud to say that I am the new Legislative Aid and Communication Specialist for Councilman Roderick Gay. And I'm here to serve and promote all of the great stories in Ward Four. Now, as someone who is deeply committed to the power of communication and community, I want you to know that I'm here to listen, to connect, and to, most importantly, tell all of the great stories that are happening here in our wonderful ward. There's so much for us to be excited about. From the almost-completed renovations at Phillips Park to the first botanical garden in the state of Georgia in over a decade, right here in our backyard. Ward Four is not only growing, it is blooming, both literally and figuratively. Under Councilman Roderick Gay's leadership, we are moving forward with purpose. These developments are just a glimpse of the many things that are happening in our community, which is vibrant, inclusive, and full of opportunity. So if you want to stay connected and to know about all of our upcoming events and initiatives, please make sure that you are first following us on our social media, our Facebook. And we have a new Instagram. You can follow us at WardFourCollegeParkGeorgia. That's Ward, the number four, College Park, Georgia. So if you just search that up in your Instagram, you'll see everything happening in real time. Also, our wonderful website is gonna be full of information, all of these lovely videos that you see here, from press releases to announcements to pictures that some of you may be in when you come out to all of our great events that we have coming up. Go to roderickgay.com, and you will see all of the different things that we're doing in Ward Four, and we promise to keep that updated. So I just wanna say thank you again so much for coming out. I look forward to working alongside with each of you as we continue to build a stronger Ward Four together.
And Monica is actually raised in Ward Four. Her parents are my neighbors. So we've been great friends and honored to have Monica return back to now be part of our community. So welcome, Monica. All right, let me acknowledge a few people and hear from our elected official that's here representing. Then we're gonna go down the list. So we see our councilwoman McKenzie, you wanna come? Mayor Protem as well, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all look amazing, amazing. I just wanna say it's an honor and a privilege to be here to join you in this Ward Four Town Hall today. And even as Monica has already said, and if we look on the video, I am so excited about what's going on in the city of College Park and all of the progress that is happening in Ward Four. Truly. Yeah, y'all need to give yourself a hand because I've been in this city for a few years, but over these last few months, it's just been amazing. From the botanical gardens to Phillips Park, now a dog park, and today, we had the boxing camp and even the chess pavilion. I mean, I could go on and on and on about the things that we're seeing in your ward. So this is a fantastic time to be a resident in the city of College Park. And I just wanna give kudos to Councilman Gay and to First Lady Pamela Gay for all of your hard work. It is coming to fruition. Thank you, thank you, and thank you again.
And y'all don't realize just how hard it is to keep up with Mayor Protem McKenzie. I mean, we have to have higher staff just to keep up with her. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for supporting us. We wanna acknowledge a couple people. I wanna give a mic to... I want Ms. Phillips to say a few words so she don't have to come. But give her that mic, please. If you don't mind, just take her to the mic. Ms. Phillips, if you would, just give us a few words, please. Is there a mic on? Oh, Ms. Howard, check her mic.
Hi. All right, here you go, Ms. Phillips.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm excited about all the things that's happening in Ward Four. And we are making progress. And I just wanna thank Councilman Gay Gay for all the things that's happening, making our Ward Four look beautiful.
It's an honor to have Ms. Phillips here, and it's an honor to have all of y'all here. And so again, let me acknowledge my wife, First Lady Ward Four, Ms. Pam. You wanna stand and say hey to everybody? Are there any other elected officials in the house? Okay, so we're gonna move right along. There is. Oh, our city manager just came in. All right, good timing. So we're excited to have a new city manager. I think y'all will be real pleased. I see you see the social media and the city's website. So we're gonna let our new city manager come and greet y'all. And since this is her first meeting, we wanna let her know that our meetings are very brief. So welcome and come on up.
Good evening. I got the cue as brief. Well, I just wanted to say thank you for having me. And thank you for allowing me to serve you. And I wanted you also to know that this is not a career for me. This is truly a role of service. And I'm here for you and the staff. And everyone know I have boots on the grounds on Fridays. I'm in your wards, you know, looking at concerns, but I'm gonna keep it brief. I got the memo. Just thank you for having me here.
That was brief, so thank you. And is Nelia's here, Eleanor? Our Ward Four legacy neighbor. Come on in. She's got some great updates. Organization she started, she's also the South Fulton Woman Democrat.
Good evening, everyone. Let's do that better. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, that's much better. I'm here on behalf of Know Your Neighbor this evening. And I just wanna let you all know that Know Your Neighbor was birthed during COVID, during 2021. And we decided to do that to have a system to check on our neighbors. Get to know your neighbor because some of us live right next door to people that we haven't met or spoken with. So it's important that we engage in a conversation with our neighbors because we don't ever know when we might need them. Know Your Neighbor is about promoting voter registration, making sure that we get people out to vote. We have an election coming up in November, and we also wanna make sure that we go out and vote on Bill 648. That's a very important bill, so make sure we do that. Keeping citizens informed about the local, state, and federal issues. That's what Know Your Neighbor is about. It is not a political mobile. It is about the citizens and the people. I have a flyer here. We're gonna have a meet and greet on July 26 over in Charles Phillips Park. And we hope that you will set aside that date and join us. And before I leave, I'm gonna tell you our officers in Know Your Neighbor. I have three minutes, it's not up, Councilman. Again, I'm Eleanor Cornelius, and I'm the President. The Vice President, you heard from her a few minutes ago, Katrina Williams. And Ken Jenkins, they are co-Vice Presidents. Our Secretary is Carla Walker. Our Treasurer is Maddie and Ted Price. Voter Registration is Annette Whiteman. And Hospitality is none other than Jesse Phillips. We applaud our officers, and we thank you. And hopefully, we will see you on July 26. Be ready to eat hamburgers and hot dogs. They're free.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Eleanor, for all you do. Eleanor does a great job. We have some of our city directors here. We're gonna get them out the way so we can get into the business of the home warranty and the senior tax and a couple other important initiatives, and then we're gonna get out of here. So we're gonna start off in no particular order. Chief, if you'll come on up. There's been some issues, but Chief will set the record straight and give us... let us know what's going on.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Most of you I have met and talked to previously. Those of you who do, I have not. My name is Connie Rogers. I have the honor and privilege of being the police chief here in this, what I consider the best police department in metro Atlanta. And I know many of you, when I introduce myself, always with honor and privilege because it's truly an honor and privilege to work alongside the great men and women of the College Park Police Department. And the privilege and honor that I get to serve all every single day. We've had a few issues in Ward Four, namely Airbnb's. But as far as crime, the city as a whole is experiencing... We have right now a 19.3% decrease in crime. That's across the city. Ward Four is sitting at a 22% decrease in crime of where y'all was last year. Give yourselves a hand because that's in part because of you all. And because you have a councilman who is heavily involved with what's going on in his ward. And that's great because when you contact him, he contacts me even before you contact him. See something, he's calling and we get it corrected. So Councilman Gay, thank you for all that you do. We've had an issue with the Airbnb's. Although the city doesn't necessarily have an ordinance, we do not allow Airbnb's. We had a recent incident. And what I want you to do, if you see it, call 911. And what we're gonna start doing is creating an incident report of that house. And then we're gonna just do supplements of every time we have to come out to the house. And then we get so many calls, we're gonna find that owner, and we're gonna reach out, and they're gonna be cited for disordered house. So eventually, if they have to continually come out their pockets, they will stop. As always, I'm here for you. Don't know, I have my number. I don't get a day off, I'm on call all the time. So if you need something, if you can't get in contact with Councilman Gay, feel free to give me a call. I thank y'all so much. If you need anything, we're here.
Thank you, Chief, for all you do. And she's right. As a young people say, I blow a phone up every day. From tractor trailers to litter to strangers in our community. All right, let's keep it going. We have our Recreation Leader and our IT, and he's gonna talk a little bit about the technology. Come on up, Michelle, the technology of our city and how that keeps us safe and orderly. And Michelle Johnson's our Recreation Director. So all of the good stuff we're seeing comes through Ms. Johnson. She's a staple here. And just thank you for all you do to support Ward Four.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Michelle Johnson. We've got some great new projects going on in Phillips Park. We've got the playground, which is one of our largest playgrounds, thanks to Councilman Gay. He knows that I was looking to replace all the parks throughout the city. So Phillips is the one that we're currently working on. And we're looking towards Zup Park for the next fiscal year. So there is a budget for that. So we're adding some more equipment to Phillips Park, so it's gonna be a little bit longer on finishing up that project. We just finished up a concrete pad for a pop-up boxing rink, which we had an event out there today. We had the basketball court, which we added last year. And then we're working on possibly some type of new amenities out at Brandon Park, too. So it's also in Ward Four. So we've got some great activities going on. If there's any questions or any issues or any programming concerns or anything that's interested, please reach out. We are always wanting to start new programs. And all we need is space. That's what we've always gotta find, is space. We need a big new space one day in the near future. But again, thank y'all, and it's great to see everybody here. And thank you, Councilman Gay. He does champion for recreation big time, so thank you.
Thank you for coming out, Michelle. And while we... Come on, Michael. While we're talking about recreation, there is a boxing camp. It has one more week left at Phillips Parks for youth. And there's also a chess camp. And our chess master's here. He'll talk a little bit about it. So if you got children or grandchildren or know of neighbors with children, take advantage. They're free. And today, we had a champion, Carissa Shields, at Phillips Park today. She's a three-time world champion. And actually, she came and did a media thing with the kids. So that was big, and thank God for Ward Four. So Michael, come on up. For those who don't know, Michael is actually born... was raised in Ward Four. So he's coming back, and we're gonna keep it brief.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief. Well, good evening, Ward Four. One of the reasons why this Ward Four meeting is special to me because I grew up here in College Park. I attended Lake Shore High School. So it was an honor for College Park to think enough of me to ask me to come back and bring their technology up to the 21st century. So I'm honored to serve you as your Technology Director. So I'm gonna start off by talking about a number of things that we've done in Ward Four. We have brand-new cameras around Ward Four, particularly around the park. We put in brand-new cameras, folks. We put in free Wi-Fi at the park. So while your children are playing on the playground, you can pull out your tablets, surf our website so you can keep up with what's going on in our city. One of the things I'm responsible for is 99% of the software that we use around the city. And one of our software packages, we call it Citizen Concern. We call it See Something, Say Something. If you see something around the city, say something about it. And we've installed that software. And did you all see the flyer out front? Anybody see the flyer? Well, we want you to take this flyer because we've got you in mind. We made this very simple. You simply click the QR code, and it takes you right to all of the issues. And you choose the issue that's relevant to you. An abandoned car, the red light's not working, loose dogs, Airbnb issue. Any of those issues that you come across. Okay, we made it very simple for you. You click that QR code, choose what you want, take a picture. It's uploaded, and it goes to the appropriate department. We get it, folks. We wanna help you. Our city manager is serious about the See Something, Say Something software and about all of the staff getting these reports and making sure we follow up with your concern. So please take one of the flyers out front, click the QR code, it works. We've tested it. And I am here to serve you. We're doing a lot more in Ward Four. And Councilman Gay, because I've been a member of the Rotary Club, I know what time means, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for all you do. And he's right. We have cameras all over the city. I tell my own family, every inch of our ward is being watched on cameras. And these cameras keep images for up to a month. The basketball goal, the streets, the intersection, everything is under cameras. So thanks to Mike for his leadership. Okay, we're gonna now hear from our Ward Four Board Appointees. Our Ward Four Board Appointees serve as volunteers. They don't actually get paid. They live in our ward, and they do a great job. And they ever wanna talk. So this time, you gotta talk. So come on up, guys. Charles, Vincent, Mr. Jefferson, Ms. Jefferson, come on up. Tangi. And let them know what board you serve on and your assignment was to say something that's relevant to us.
Good evening, neighbors. My name's Vincent Mency. I serve for Ward Four on the Main Street Association Board, the College Park Main Street Association. We oversee Main Street and Virginia Avenue. And we try to bring more business and more people together by bringing different events together. Right now, coming up, we have our next wine scroll coming up on August 14. We had one earlier this year. Who all made it out? We wanna see Ward Four out there because it's a great event. It's a good chance to meet all the different businesses as well as all the different specials that the businesses have for College Park neighbors. So please make it out. Look forward to seeing you guys.
I'm Charles German. I'm Ward Four zoning with the BZA. That's the appeals, zoning appeals. And I run the chess camp for College Park Chess Associations. Right now, it's... You know, we're glad, we're waiting on a couple of things, top of the chess pad, so kids won't get burned out there within the sun. Other than that, what can I say? We're gonna keep it short. Support Central Station ATL. We have a lot of events coming out there. And I'm picking over the other.
Good afternoon, city of College Park. My name is Charles Jefferson. I represent Keep College Park Beautiful on the chair. Our board consists of five members plus a director. And what we wanna do, our mission is to get College Park beautiful. And in order to get College Park beautiful, we just need everyone to be involved. When we have events, we just want, if you can volunteer, hey, let us know. My name is Charles Jefferson, and I'm readily available for anybody who wants to volunteer. I'm approachable, just approach me. I'm always in the park, so just let me know. What our plans are, we want to get with the community. If you have ideas in reference to other beautification projects that you see that Councilman Gay hasn't done because he's done a lot. Matter of fact, let me take a portion of time to thank him because he has done so much for Ward Four as far as beautification projects. I'm shocked. So I want everyone here to give him a big round of applause for what he's doing. And it's even making me motivated to do more. I wanted, and I'm saying it in front of everyone, if you ever need someone to assist you in anything, I'm your man, you can contact me. And I can get my people to help you also. Another thing we're gonna be doing, too, is... I'm not gonna take much time. We're gonna be approaching the board to... We have some projects that we wanna do, but we need the board, the council members, to support us in doing some of these projects. So there's gonna be new projects coming, hopefully. So just keep us in your prayers, and we're gonna keep striving on.
Hello, everyone. I am Tangi Warrior, and I serve on the Planning Commission for the city. And I'm happy to let you guys know that College Park now has its own Planning Commission. We are no longer using a third party to assist us. We have a new person onboard. Her name is Lenise Lyons. And so far, she's been doing a really great job. We just got approved. The mayor and council approved the budget for our comprehensive plan that we're up for now. So that is gonna be coming forth. And for Ward Four, we are tackling some tax amendment that's gonna help our neighborhood. So that's what we have on the agenda. And we meet monthly, every Monday, 5:30 at the City Hall Chambers. So we're happy for you to come out and listen so your voice can be heard. It's very important with new businesses or anything that wants to come into the city, new development, you have the opportunity to voice your opinion if you come to those meetings. And again, that is every... It's the last Monday of the month at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Melissa Jefferson, and I serve as your appointee for the Business and Industrial Development Authority Board. If you're not familiar with what we do, we are a chartered board by the state in order to sell, promote, and develop land parcels in the city of College Park. So our main goal is to promote economic development. I'm pretty sure a lot of you are aware, we kinda have a small dark cloud hanging over us, but we just be... just rest assured that we are working through that. And we want you to keep us in your prayers. And definitely come out. You know, our meeting is a public meeting. And we're really here to hear from the citizens on what you would like to see in your city as far as, you know, economic development. Our meetings are held every second Wednesday of the month, and they are held at the GICC. You will receive a public notice on the city of College Park website. And during our meeting and our agenda, we have a section called "Other Issues." And that area is where we can have the opportunity to hear questions from you or your concerns. But please come out, participate. We'd love to see you. But rest assured, we do have, as far as our upcoming projects, for Ward Four, Ward Four, our business district is very small. However, our main goal is that 18 acres that lies between Riverdale Road and Global Gateway Connection. We have some plans that's coming forth for that area. We have some plans that's coming forth for that area. Our overall major project that's coming up is, if you're aware, PMG is developing a residential community on our 55 acres in Six West. And that community will consist of single-family homes, townhomes, as well as apartments. We are expecting or looking forward to maybe a groundbreaking as of November of this year. So keep your prayers forward and let me know if you have any offline questions that I can answer. But we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Before y'all leave, hold on one second. Let me also let y'all know on a more personal level. Charles is, we both went to Tuskegee. Charles, 30 years as a special needs teacher in Atlanta schools. This gentleman and this lady, they are inseparable, so. They're teammates. Ms. Jefferson is a commercial realtor and an investor realtor, and she do so much. She actually fights for our ward. She makes sure that there's transparency. So thank God for Ms. Jefferson. Ms. Tangi, I learned, is also raised in Ward Four. And she has an amazing son, young man. This young man went all the way to the NFL. He's Ward Four. And we're gonna be trying to get him to get involved as running our recreation program. We think he deserves it and he can take us to another level. Vincent owns College Park Shoe Store. Right, Vincent? So they do an amazing job. And just thank y'all for all that y'all do, okay? All right. So we're about to get into two important topics and we're doing good with time. Did anyone fill out a comment card? If anyone, we're gonna have enough time to take one or two comments, but it'll be through the cards. So if anyone want to fill a comment card out, just raise your hand and one of the community officers will bring you a card, or Monica. If someone want to make a comment, just raise your hand and we'll take a few comments. So right after this, there's a bookbag giveaway. And I know a lot of our children are grown, but you have neighbors and you have grandchildren. And you have, some of y'all are still educators, so you can take some bags back to your school. So let's get into two important subjects. And that actually may do it for us. And if there's something I missed, please let me know. But let's just talk a little bit about the senior tax exemption. And just raise your hand if you're familiar with the senior tax exemption. Okay. And keep your hand raised if you own your home. Okay, cool. All right, so what this bill is, is also, I call it the Shirley Robinson Bill. So right now, I want to introduce you to Ms. Shirley Robinson. She doesn't have to come up. But Ms. Robinson, if you would just stand for one second. So this is Shirley Robinson. And Ms. Robinson came to me and said years ago, "Councilman Gay, why do we pay city property tax if we are exempt from Fulton County tax?" And so I thought that that was a good thing. So we set out to exempt College Park residents from paying the city property tax. Now, why is city property tax? You'll say, "Well, Councilman Gay, you need taxes for police and fire and water." And you do. Taxes is how cities make, pay for the bills. But let me just tell you real quick a little bit about the city you live in. Per capita, we're probably the 16th richest city in the state. Our budget is $220 million a year. And it's just recently that y'all starting to see outside of mandated services, the bounty of that money. And you're gonna see even more of it. But it's $220 million a year. And so our property taxes, including our commercial taxes, only pays, not only, but we make about $3.5 million gross on commercial and residential tax. So this legislation to exempt seniors 65 or older from paying your city property tax costs approximately $2.5 million if every homeowner 65 or older in this entire city took it. So if you hear any nonsense about blah, 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 that's not true. The truth is, if every senior 65 or older who owns their home was exempt from paying their city property tax, it wouldn't cost us but a property, $2.5 million out of the $225 million that we get. So why do we get so much money? Well, we all know, because of the airport. Everybody know that if, the airport is like a gold mine or oil well. So we get taxed from the rental cars, the mixed drink tax, the hotels, the fuel, and I can go on and on and on. And that's why we have so much money. So Ms. Robinson, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We lost twice. The governor, I guess he says, "I don't know what's going on in College Park, but I done signed this damn bill three times." So governor, thank you for your leadership. But the third time he signed it, it exempts, and it's only College Park. So it's a quality of life bill and maybe other cities are buying to it. So it's on the November 4th referendum. And we hope to, you voted for it twice when there was an income requirement. So it should pass. So you have two weeks of early vote. So please, I'm asking you to support that House bill. So thank you for everyone for supporting that. There may be questions about the House bill and we can certainly take those questions. And you can call me or you can, we can talk afterwards. But it's a real thing and soon this is exempt. Now, one more thing I want to tell you about the House bill before I'm done. Did you know that College Park, up until a couple of years ago, we did a moratorium, Mayor Portem voted for, to where we don't sell your delinquent property tax? You know that feeling you get when your tax bill is due? Well, we have a moratorium that we just waiting it out. We just gonna help you figure it out. But what used to happen for years, and I'm ashamed to tell you this, it's not that bad, but we used to auction your tax at our City Hall chambers every year with a real auctioneer. So let me tell you something. If you owe, say, $700 or $1,000 or $1,500 for your city property tax, and let's say you pass, you went on to heaven, and you having a strange child that didn't come around and say they have your house. Well, if your tax had been sold, and this is a true story, it could have been sold for as high as $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 because most of y'all houses are paid for. And most of the houses in Ward Four have about 170 up. So that's why an investor would be happy to buy your delinquent tax. And so when your family tries to get that house back, they have to pay that debt off. So that's a predatory lending that we stopped. It wasn't easy, but we stopped it. The second initiative I want to talk to you about is the service line warrant. Does anybody have a flyer, one of those flyers? Did anybody bring a flyer in, Monica? You have one in your hand. Let me see that flyer. If anyone's got this flyer, we're gonna be mailing this flyer to your house next week. A lot of y'all, a lot of y'all signed up when you were here last. But at the time, as we told you, we didn't quite have a concrete understanding. And so the first company we was gonna use, it didn't work out. So now we have a relationship with this 877-828-7734 number because they say I can't say their name. I said, "We can't say your name?" He said, "But anyways, okay, all jokes aside." So how this works is, you've seen these programs before. Now, listen, we all know that warranties don't fix everything. There's always situations that are not covered. But for the most part, those large pine trees in our front yard that damage our roots, or heavy truck that damaged your root, or just aging of the pipe, that's covered. So your sewer line is covered. And imagine this, there's a lady here tonight, I think I saw her. I think I saw her. She's in her 80s. She's been living here for 40-something years and her sewer line broke. She got like four estimates, anywhere from a few thousand to several thousand. And it wasn't budgeted. Imagine that feeling that you're on a fixed income and you have a sewer break, a water line, or even your indoor plumbing, and it's not covered. That alone could change things for you. So this is what we came up with to try and give our seniors a better quality of life. So how this has to work, and this is how this plan has to work. If you have a plan and you happy with your plan, that's fine. But the way this plan works is you sign up tonight, or if you've already signed up, we still have your information. Or you can sign up tomorrow, the next day. You can sign up for the rest of this year. All year, you can sign up. You can sign up on the internet and you can take this flyer with you. You can come to our customer service and William M. will help you. They'll give you the information. You can call me. But you can get signed up or you can just go online and sign up. And I can't give you the name. But but we are required for you to purchase all three lines. So you got to ensure your sewer, water, and indoor pipes. You have to do all three and you have to do it for a year. So it has to be for a 12-month warranty. It costs $179. Now, you said, "Councilman Gay, you said it was free." Well, it is free. But this company requires you to pay because under Georgia insurance law, if I pay for your coverage, I'm the insured, not you. So the way we getting around that, the workaround from that is, all you simply have to do is when you come to customer service, just bring your policy. They're gonna give you, time you sign up, they're gonna mail you a sheet that say you cover. Just bring it to customer service and we're gonna get you a check for $179. You're gonna get reimbursed $179. We even wanted to pay it, but they won't let us do it. So even though it is an extra step, it's not a lot to protect your precious asset, which is your house. So it's $179. You have to do all three coverages any night. Founded by a councilwoman, she's no longer with her night. She's not with her night. But her team is out there. And when we leave, if you could just take the time to sign up again if you haven't signed up. This is 55, not 65. So if you're not 55, keep living and you will qualify. 55 and your coverage. The senior tax exemption is, well, this is 55 and senior tax exemption is 65. And you don't have to have lived in your house. You just need to show proof of ownership. You don't have to have lived here for many years. So real quick, let me just touch on a couple of things real quick. For the first time since I've been on council, we have the same thing Washington have. They own the White House, the Congress, and the Senate. Meaning they get things done. We can get stuff done, Ward Four. We have the cooperation of our council members and they all are on board. They all are on board. Let me just stress that again. They are on board. We have a million dollars to spend, each of us, in our ward for community enhancements. So if you don't see your streets getting paved and you don't see a park, you don't see new lights, then something wrong because I just told you. There's a million dollars to spend from July to next July in Ward Four and in each one of these persons ward on community projects. And so we're open for suggestions. If there's some initiatives you want to tell us about, come to me and say, "Roger." The chess pad is because of Charles. The sewer line, the insurance. So you all bring suggestions to us and we're gonna try and implement them. So that is a bit of good news. And what you will see is your streaks being paved. There's about four streaks. I don't want to be, don't hold me to this now, but Williamsburg and Winthrop. Well, hold on. Let's just, let's just, let's just get it done and I'll keep you posted. Because we're doing so good time. Now, I just need y'all to do me one favor. If y'all don't mind, can you just kind of look around for a minute? Just everybody just look around. Just please look around for a second. This is what, this is what community looks like, all right? This is what it feels like to be in a community. And we're gonna assume that the people who are 50 and under are watching online or gonna watch it on Instagram because their shoe is not in here, okay? Well, I take it back. We do have some, we got some baby boom, we got some young, we got some young'uns in here. But, Emma Hursler, but, but, but I just want y'all to, I'm really just trying to honor you and tell you just how proud my wife and I are you all on how y'all always, always, always stick together. And it just says a lot about who y'all are as a people and who all y'all have been as a community. And so we're just honored to serve. Now, if there weren't any comment cards. Now, before she does, she's new and so let me let her know that it won't be but one or two. So just bring them on. So it won't be but one or two. I'm not saying I'm not gonna read them, but it's not gonna be read tonight. And so if you want to, Monica, read this one. I'm not even gonna read it. Just read it, Monica. Because we do have a tradition and people want to talk to their neighbors and friends.
So the first comment, this resident asked, "I would like to know when the House bill passes, when will it go into effect?"
That answer is for the next following year. And thereafter. So thank you for your question, Monica. I'm sorry, what did you say?
So basically, this is gonna go in effect in 2026. So when you get your bill in the beginning of next year, that's gonna be for this past year's tax. But from 2026 on, you will not pay any property taxes if you're 65 years old.
And that is awesome. I'm just gonna keep on living, okay? All right, the second question is, "Is there anything being done about the infrastructure of College Park electric? It seems like the electric goes out even when it's not raining."
I didn't hear what you said. He was talking to me. Just, what did you say? All right, that's a good question. That's really a good question. So let me tell you that there have been outages, but not nearly as many as we used to experience. You know, we used to get them like all the time. There have really been true storms. I mean, these have really been storms. Some things you may not know is that our power department is on call. So when our lights go off and a tree fall, you're talking about guys that are driving that don't even live here, stop doing what they're doing, get in their truck and come to Ward Four and jump on a pole. That's why I'm texting you all. So they take lights out serious. So whenever your lights are off, there's also, I think it's a website, I believe it's a number that you can, on our website, that's an outage. But you can't go in it because your light's off, right? But if your phone is working. There is a non-emergency number you can also call. But there is two things that has happened that I want to tell you. You know what a breaker is to your house, right? Your Your circuit. So College Park has added circuits around our city in the wires. And that is to prevent going to our transmission station. And so there's about four or five large transmission stations in our city. So a lot of times when your lights go off, to the person with the question, if it's not a storm, if it's not a tree that has torn a power line now, a squirrel or animal could have tripped it, so it breaks. So we can do that in-house. We have crews that are here that can go and reset the breaker. They just want to make sure it's safe. But, so let me just make it clear. Unlike cities that you might live in, and I don't know, but in this city, when your lights go off, we know about it in real time. And even though you may not hear from me, because I don't have all y'all to text, we are actively cutting your power back on. And let me just say one more thing. And I'm not making slight award one or any other awards. But because of who y'all are, and because of your reputation, they take you serious. When Ward 4 go off. Yeah, all right? Let's get the next one.
Okay, this is actually a kudos. This resident just says, I'm thankful for the speed bumps and three-way stop sign at Lake Shore and Janus Drive.
Actually, actually, that's bittersweet. Because for everyone that clapped, that's somebody who don't like them. So that's real. In fact, our daughter says to us, she says, Dad, you've done a great job. I'll take two more. She said, Dad, you done a great job, but the dumbest thing you ever did was to put these speed breakers down. But believe it or not, there have been fatalities in our ward. There have been curbs, that's a, can you get that one? There's been fatalities. So for that inconvenience, if we can save someone's life, I think it's worth it. We're gonna take one more, and then two more, and that's gonna be it. We're gonna be done. And I, you know, we had John, let me get the, excuse me, let me get the, we had John Lewis here, and we haven't had a crowd like this since John Lewis was here. So you really need to give yourself a hand.
So this resident wants to know, could we consider having more recycling receptacles, including for glass? And they think that four is not enough.
So that's also bittersweet. Personally, I don't like the recycle bins, but I'm outvoted. So there is a conversation about door-to-door recycling. And so just by a show of hands, would you prefer door-to-door recycling or the bins? Who want door-to-door? Who want the bins? Door-to-door is the little green can that they put at your door. So would you, would you like the recycle bins to come to your house? And do away with the dumpsters? That's what I'm saying. So listen, that's a conversation that we're having to do door-to-door recycling, because we don't actually make money with those recycle bins. In fact, the recycle bins have been, have become a dumping site. So they're contaminated, so we don't even really get clean dumpsters. Because so, but then there are people who like, we need somewhere to bring our recycling. So that's a conversation, and that's something we can look forward to changing.
Okay, and the final comment, this resident wants to know, when will the pothole be fixed on Green Springs Road? Because it seems to be getting bigger.
So on my phone, I can bet you that at approximately 3 o'clock today, I call Raymond Cotton at Water Highway and Street. I said, Raymond, what's up with the pothole, Raymond? Because you're right, it makes no sense. And that's why you all should really download, see clicks fix on your phone, or call and complain. I don't care, you can call me, I don't care who you call. Most of the things that have been fixed around here have been from people complaining. If you don't complain, I don't know. So the city manager is also adamant about staff and these potholes. So it is getting bigger, whoever said that, because I just was on there today. You, you saw it. But a good news is, y'all are getting some amazing streetscapes. We have about four more quarters to do, and you're gonna have beautiful streetscapes. And they're being done not just for one day, but they're being planted in a way that they should last for years to come. So this concludes our meeting. Does everyone give our hand? And we have to-go boxes for those who don't want to wait. For those who you want to hang out and talk, let's talk. Sorry, there's no music running, you could have had some exit music. And please, if you want to fill out now, just take a moment with Enite and fill your form out. But you have all the rest of the month, the year to fill it out. Thank you.